It is five thirty, we will call to order the first city council meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. This is the International Falls organizational meeting. At this time, we will, if you could please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And you are the representative for religious stance, one nation, under God. With liberty and justice.
Thank you, everybody. The organizational meeting is to handle the annual business of the city council. As you can see, we have two new members of our city council, and we have a third member of our city council that was reelected. So at this time, we will do the administration of the, to administer the oath of office to our election winners. Councilor Pete Taylor, East Ward City Councilor, Timothy Wagner from the Center Ward City Councilor, and Walt Buller from the West Ward City Council. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I will ask each of the informants to hand.
I think it would be good, yeah.
Stand where my men.
Can we, with the order, would it not? While you will follow that. Right, exactly. That we did to person. So, if you got to five.
Aye. Pete Taylor, I want to. So, please, so I, the support constitution of the United States.
He was gonna go up.
And if the state is for.
Okay, so, exactly, my answer is.
And maybe we have to rest, but I have a little bit.
This time, the meeting of.
This time, the meeting of the store conference. And then once I do, like, third conference.
You know, before we even, uh, walk through your mind.
And before we see you in the National Falls today, man, you can say.
Thank you. You're fine. There, maybe you don't plan, but then we, uh, find my own, to start right.
So at this time, now we have four or five members of the city council that can vote on action. So the first item that we have is, or the next item that we have is number three on there, which is the selection of a council president pro temp. As you can see, I had, I had said that I'd like to see either Councilor Buller or Councilor Taylor, both because they have four, four years in, in service. One not consecutively, the other one consecutively. But with that being said, this is on the council. You can make a choice to appoint anyone you'd like to serve as the council president. So I will leave that, the chair would entertain a motion from the members of the council to pick a president pro temp.
Motion we have Pete Taylor.
Where you jumped in there, didn't you?
Don't you have to wait till he's done counting?
He's gotta do it three times.
Yeah.
All right, so we have one, we have a motion for Pete Taylor as the president pro temp. Do you accept that?
I accept the motion.
Okay, we have one motion and an acceptance. Do we have any other nominations for president pro temp?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Walt Buller for pro temp.
We have a motion for, uh, Councilor Buller for president pro temp. Do you accept that nomination?
This would be pretty hard to accept, man, I mean.
Okay, so I, you do not accept?
Yeah.
Decline.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for president pro temp? Hearing none, I will call the motion for unanimous ballot for the president pro temp, Pete Taylor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. All right, we will move forward to mayoral appointment members to internal and external committees for council confirmation. Land use of legislation, I would like to have myself as the chair and Councilor Wagner. Currently, that, those meetings are the first, the first month, first Monday of the month, which is usually yesterday at four o'clock. With that being said, we actually had someone that came today, and because we hadn't had our committee set yet, they're coming to this meeting tonight. So I would put that forward for concurrence from the council. Chair would entertain a motion to concur.
I'm.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to budget and finance, that would be all the members of the city council. And due to Councilor Taylor becoming the president pro temp, I would like to have him as the chair of budget, budget and finance. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, those appointments. So we have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Just one thing that I didn't bring up yet, I really struggle at names when I'm up here, so. Being new, Tim, being new, Pete, I'm gonna probably call you guys by the wrong names a couple of times, but it'll only happen for about a month.
No, it's happened for four years, don't even say it.
Oh, oh, I've been called worse than Tim before, Mike.
So anyways, I just wanna get that out before I actually do it. Also, I'd also like to go to Public Works and Infrastructure. I would like to put Councilor Buller, who serves as the chair now, on there, and Councilor Taylor. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those nominations.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to city, city representatives on board the mission committees and task forces. I would like to appoint myself, Councilor Buller, and citizen Brian Briggs to the Airport Commission for a two-year term. Chair would entertain a motion to concur that nomination. I'll move. We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have a second? I'll second, we have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the International Falls School District three sixty-one, not three sixteen, but Recreation Commission, and that is gonna be Councilor Holden, Councilor Wagner, and citizen Carla Lyon, all for a two-year term, expiring in two thousand and twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion for that concurrence.
We can prove.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, going to the Kuching Economic Development Authority. I would like to put myself on that, and whoever serves as the International Falls Economic Development Authority's president. Currently, that is Councilor Holden. With that being said, we don't know what's gonna happen, but I would have to assume he's done a good job. I would assume to keep him in that position. So at this time, I would like to appoint myself and whoever fills that role at our next meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those appointments. We will, we have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, I'm going to the Housing and redevelopment Authority for the members of the council that we have now and our past council. Our former councillor Joe Kraus has had a lot of interest in housing and how to try to make that better in our area, and how to, and he's worked with HRAs and other places to see if we can get some more growth here. So with that being said, I would like to appoint Joe Kraus as my appointment for the Housing redevelopment Authority. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that. I'll move. We have a motion by, by Councilor Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Library Board. We have two reappointments and one appointment. I would like to reappoint Ashley Kostic, which is currently serving as the president of the Library Board, Mona Johnson, and Willie Frank. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Planning Commission, I have three appointments on that, they are all reappointments. I, I will say that there is a member here that has not attended meetings, but they, they get called so infrequently, they're with a week's notice or, or something, and there's always been time coming up. I've spoke with the city administrator about this, and we're gonna start having quarterly meetings of the Planning Commission so that they're scheduled more so than being just called. I think that'll help a lot of the members on the, on the board to be able to be more active. So I would like to reappoint the three members that you have before you, Brian Yusso, Tara Bash, and Joanne Dornhettner. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those reappointments.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a reappointment of Bill Valentine to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that appointment. We'll move, we have a motion by Councilor Wagner, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the North Kooch area sanitary, sanitary district. We have two, two appointments that were, their terms that were up at the end of this, this year. One of which was Crystal Plants, and the other one was Terry Murray. And I have spoke with Terry Murray, and he has no interest in continuing due to some health concerns that he has. With that being said, I did have a conversation with the council members at our last committee of the whole meeting, and Councilor Wagner has expressed interest in two sitting on this board. There's nothing wrong with appointing Councilor Wagner to that board right now, but I have some concerns having three city councillors sitting on that board, because then we have a quorum on the North Kooch sanitary district. I'm leaving that open, and I have a handful of people that I've spoke to and some other people that have expressed interest. And with that being said, we're still in communication. So the term doesn't start until February first, that gives us another two weeks. So with that being said, I will have an appointment, whether it's Councilor Wagner or somebody else to fill that position by beginning of February.
I would just like, maybe, but that being said, we'll have a point, but that should be taken care of because they're public meetings, and they have to get more of a sleep with them.
Correct.
And it comes to that.
Yeah, my concern is that it doesn't look like it's a transparency. I would definitely. I, I just don't feel like you'd be looking very.
So, and, and I, it's my, my, my belief as well, so we're still seeking that position. So at this time, I would like to reappoint Crystal Plants to the North Kooch Ching area sanitary.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilor Buller.
Like, I both have to work with her. Yeah, we've had to work with her, and she's talked for a while, yeah. Never smiled.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Fire Civil Service Commission. We'd like to reappoint Van Pavlik for another term. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Special Police Department Fund. Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Councilor Holden and Councilor Wagner.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, what is it? Well, you know what, Tim, I didn't know what it was either.
Okay.
City Administrator, you wanna give a little background of what that, that fund is?
Oh. It is a fund of dollars that were put aside years ago for law enforcement. As they retire between ages of fifty-five and sixty-five, if they retire from the service, they are allocated a hundred and fifty dollars towards health benefits. So the fund is depleting quickly, as we have a, a number of our retired officers that are drawing on this. Once the money's on there, they were allocated years ago from a special legislative motion, and I, I can't, I'm not thinking of it right this moment, but that's where the funds originally came from. And we've invested them, and you know, earned interest in things over the years, but it is depleting, and once it's on, it's off.
Yes, from before, I was even higher than that. Long ago, it was. Then you'll see him in the.
Right.
In the financials, but that's when you'll see one of those guys, that's what the hundred and fifty bulk is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? And it's funny you say that, because there were other ones that the city administrator and I had to really look up to find why we have appointments too, because we haven't had meetings, but this is one that still needs to have.
When I was on the board, I never had meetings.
Right.
Yeah, I see one coming up a day so bad.
All right, so we have a motion and a, and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Forestale Cemetery Board. This is, this is an appointment that the city of International Falls can make, we do not have to make. This started a couple of years back. Our first two city councils, or two people that sat on that board from the city was Councilor Buller and Councilor Kraus. They sat on that board for two years, did a fantastic job. And then because of some people that wanted to be on the board, and it doesn't have to be a city councillor that is appointed to this. Last year, I appointed Ward Merrill and myself to that board. And I'll be very open and transparent, I've only made one meeting of that board, just on the timing of when it is. And Ward has done a fantastic job in that role. He is the president right now, and I, I'm very proud to reappoint him. And I'd also like to appoint Councilor Wagner, just so we have somebody on this board that is going to the meetings that can bring information back. A little bit different, I have staggered terms on this, and the reason for it is the, the cemetery board, they have three-year terms, and I don't want our terms to be all going up at the same time in case we have a turnover on council or whatever. So I wanna make sure that we have a little bit of staggered terms. So I'm gonna put Ward Merrill in for a three-year term, or, yeah, so a three-year term, and Councilor Wagner in for a two-year term. Then after that, I think it would make sense to just put in three-year terms after that, but that's for whoever sits in the seat in the future, so. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those two appointments.
So.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. So the next one is one of the ones that we just don't know what it was. So I've been mayor for three and a half years, and we've had appointments on this board, and Councilor Deech had sat on it, and I asked him flat out, have you ever had a meeting? And he goes, no, I don't even know what it is. So that causes us to have to do some concern on why we're appointing people to this board. We, the city administrator and I reached out last week to, we did a lot of internet searching first, and then we ended up reaching out to Kooch Ching County Soil and Water. They got us in touch with, with Mac Gwynn at the county. This is a, this is a board that does meet annually. However, in the time of COVID, they have not met in three years. So that's why Councilor Deech had never sat on that board, we've never heard of it. We have been informed on where to send our, our appointees so that they can be in email communication when they do have the meetings. It sounds like the meetings are in the lovely city of Birchdale, Minnesota.
I was gonna get to go to Birchdale, awesome, yeah.
So with that being said, I, you seem way too happy about this.
Oh, I might be able to stop in where the real decisions get made down there.
With, okay. I would like to appoint Councilor Taylor to the Rainy Rapid River Board. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. By chance, do you need a ride? I'm very certain.
And I know where you're talking about.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership Board. And I, by nature of his position, I would like to appoint Ted Brokaw, the Department of Public Works, Director of Public Works. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that nomination.
Holden.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the Northeast Minnesota Regional Emergency Communications Board. We will, I have Councilor Holden and Councilor Wagner. You need to have one, one main and one alternate. So I have Councilor Holden as the main and Councilor Wagner as the alternate. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
Oh.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor.
Second.
I have a second from Councilor Buller. Discussion.
Just let me know if you get any hints, so I can push you around down there, letting you know what you're talking about.
With the, I, I wanted to, well, when I was doing the appointment, we're in the office, and I said, I'd like to put in, uh, Councilor Holden and Councilor Wagner. And she goes, well, I really wouldn't thought you would have put Councilor Taylor on that. And I said, oh, no, he's had to sit through way too many of those.
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's a good thing to, to understand, but with that being said, don't let him try to work, let you work on the radio. That happened to me, don't do it.
Oh.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. And this also is the same. Same group as the last one, but these are non-elected officials. So same meetings that you guys would be dealing with is the, this group here. So again, I'm gonna put our main as Adam Manasa and our secondary as Todd O'Jua. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. That is it for our, for our appointments. Find my original. That took a long time. All right, so now we go to additional appointments. We'll go to the city attorney. Chair would entertain a motion to approve Anderson Law and Chelsea Nelson as our city attorney.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion. Just gonna start the discussion on this, this is not anything we really have to deal with now, but just some background information. As the Charter Commission has updated our charter, we have not gotten a final copy of that. The new copy of the charter, we will not have to reappoint our city attorney every year. This is just, basically, we're hiring the position, and it will stay on in perpetuity until we get a new one. So we don't have to appoint this every year. There's some other conversation we'll have with the next couple, and we'll, we'll just move on from there. But very happy, we have been working with Chelsea for approximately six months already. Things have been really, really good, there's a lot of stuff that was left undone. There was a lot of stuff that was actually finished at the end of the year. So really excited to have her move forward. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. So. What? Put it in this over there. Oh, good. There was actually talk that that might not happen. There was, there was a really big, long shot.
The long shot.
Um, okay, so the next three items, we are not going to appoint or deal with. This is kind of that moment of a hybrid situation that we're in. We have not had a health officer in the city for a couple of years. The reason for it is there's, it, it doesn't make sense. And that was one of the reasons why the council has not appointed in the last couple of years. It is also the reason that in our future home rule charter, that language is not in there. So the health officer, the board of health, and the city engineer, I'm sorry, the health, the health officer and the board of health, the reason that we are not appointing these at this time is because they are not in the new one, the new charter that has been created. So we're kind of in, in a no man's land, we haven't done it in the past, but now we actually have a vision of the future, so that's why we're not appointed. The city engineer, in both the old, the old charter and the, the new charter, both list that we have to have a engineer at disposal, and we have an engineer at disposal. Neither, neither of those copies say that we need to appoint them at the beginning of the year. However, historically, every year, we have always just reinstated that this is our city engineer. The city is working with Bolden Mink, they have a civil engineer. Both myself and the city administrator both feel that that is compliant with both the old and the new code of ordinances. Is that correct?
And being on the charter, especially that, yeah, that's a, yeah, we just need to have somebody to do the final, whatever, yeah, lookovers and stuff, but yeah. That being said, with the charter, we sent it back, are we just waiting to hear back from? Do we know the League of Minnesota Cities, or, because we wrapped it up here, uh, this summer sometime.
I'm not, I think Lisa said that she just has some grammar items to clean up, and it's very close, but due to the recent changes in administrative office, it's kind of been on the back burner, unfortunately. And, and now, as time permits, it's definitely coming forward to be approved.
Oh, okay, I was just, I just knew what we out for, and I don't, it's our backup. It'd be a lot worse if I was the one going to take it and bring it in there.
Fair enough. So just, just so there's background of why we are not appointing those, those three positions. Next, we have item number six, approval of the payroll dates bi-weekly on Tuesday commencing on one-ten, two thousand and twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those payroll dates.
I'll make that.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second? I'll second, second by Councilor Wagner. I'll second, second by councillor Wegner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Hi.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution for the designation of our depositors. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution in your packet. It's Bremer, Bremer Investments, Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Border Bank, Edward Jones, Minnesota Municipal Money Market is where the city has their funds. And though that is what we are looking to approve in the resolution. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler.
I'll second.
Second by councillor Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, something we couldn't do last year, but we're doing this year. New newspapers to have your, your publications put in there have to be in service for a year. We didn't quite make that mark last year. So I'm very happy that the Rainy Lake Gazette has come into our community and has been able to print our local stories and apparently our minutes and any publications that we have. So chair would entertain a motion to designate our official newspaper as the Rainy Lake Gazette. I'll make that motion. We have a motion by councillor Wegner. Second. We have a second by councillor Bowler. Discussion. And even though they weren't our official newspaper over the last year, we still did all of our printing in there anyways. We just couldn't officially designate them as such. I will call the question.
Hi.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Very happy to report, we went through our first city council meeting together as a team with all unanimous votes. This meeting is adjourned and we'll bring in immediately following this, our regular city council meeting.